Okay, everyone, it is 5:34. Welcome to the August 10th Select Board Meeting. Please note that in accordance with the emergency orders announced by Governor Charlie Baker to protect public health during the COVID-19 outbreak, this Select Board Meeting will not be open to the public for physical attendance, and the Select Board members are meeting online via Zoom Web Conference. This meeting is being livestreamed and cable broadcast by Eastern Community Access Television, Comcast 98, Verizon 23, and on ECAT's website, www.easterncat.org. If you're watching at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email mblanchard@easton MA.us or pose your question in the Q&amp;A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and your street address from minutes. At this time, I would like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure that we have a call.
Craig Barger.
Tom Brusart.
Chuck King.
Mark Lamb.
And Dottie Fulgenetti. Terrific. The first item on our agenda is a contract award for Fire 2021 Ambulance with Greenwood Emergency Vehicles LLC.
Sure, I think Chief Partridge is joining us. He can give an overview on the ambulance. Chief?
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everyone and that you're all doing well. It's been a while. Yeah, tonight we have, uh, buy a contract with Greenwood Emergency Vehicles for the purchase of a new ambulance for the fire department. It'd be a two, 2020 Dodge ambulance. Horton ambulance will build the box. We've been using Horton ambulances for probably close to 20 years now. And this will be our first Dodge ambulance that we're going with. It, the contract is for, one second. $342,900 to include the purchase of the ambulance, the load system, the stretcher, radios, knox box, and wireless interface, and, but not to exceed $350. So there's always, there's always, $350,000, yes. There's always a few little odds and ends that come up at the end there, so. And I believe all the documents are, are signed properly and ready for the board's review.
Great. Does any of the board members have any questions?
None at this time.
I do. What is the lifespan of this vehicle?
So what I've been trying to do is to replace one ambulance every three years. So we'll have a, an ambulance for about nine years. And what, by the time we receive the new one sometime April, May, this, this ambulance will be nine years old. It's a 2012. It'll have probably 140,000 miles on it, but it has a lot of engine hours.
Yeah, right.
Engine time, so they do rack up a lot of those time, which, which puts the wear and tear on the vehicle. So we keep them frontline for six years. We have two frontline ambulances, and then the third one is our reserve ambulance. I would anticipate that in the near future, because our numbers continue to go up, ambulance transport, that we may need to adjust that downward and purchase one a little more frequently. So that way, uh, they're not as old and, because, because the, the cost of repairs do increase over time on the ambulances.
Thank you, chief. I guess the question that picked with that, it would be, what do you do with the oldest ambulance that you get rid of?
So this one, and I'm gonna wait until we get the new one in service. If you recall, the, we received a, a Bat Bus donated to us. But apparently it's a, it's in a little more need of repair than, than we had thought. So I'm re, I'm reconsidering, yeah, I'm reconsidering putting money into the Bat Bus and possibly keeping this old ambulance, the 2012, to use for our search team instead of having the Bat Bus.
Okay, terrific. Did I hear Craig starting to say a question?
You asked the question I was gonna ask, so, no, I'm okay now.
Great, fine, great. Okay, well, if somebody would like to make a motion to award Contract Fire 2021-01 for ambulance to Greenwood Emergency Vehicles not to exceed $350,000.
Barger.
Second, Brusart.
Barger Brusart, and a roll call vote.
Barger, yes.
Brusart, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Fulgenetti, yes. Terrific. Item.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
The next item on the agenda is Contract Award HCS 2021-01 for Personal Protective Equipment for Municipal COVID-19 Operations to Safety Incorporated.
First, we have Director of Health and Community Services Kristen Kennedy's here to speak to this. She procured this. This is something that we've touched on in a couple of my standing updates. We all learned a lot through the spring, and one of the things that we did learn, as did most of the country, is that relying on regional and national supply chains for critical PPE can put you in a tight spot. And so ahead of the fall, we wanted to be more prepared, and so we're going to have a municipal cash of certain equipment. That's what this contract is for, so I'd ask Kristen to kind of give an overview of that.
Sure.
Thanks, Connor. This is a project the chief and my office have been working on together to ensure that we do have all the necessary, um, equipment, um, available as it becomes needed. Should a second wave come around, it'll position us in a, um, in a much stronger position than we were when the pandemic first took off and we were in line with everybody else trying to receive critical, excuse me, equipment. Chief, did you have anything else you wanted to add? You've added physical facility to house the product as well.
Yep, other than that, we do, we purchased a Conex box where we'll store all the equipment. We are, we did get another supply from Memer as well, so we're gonna be in good, good shape for making sure all our people have what we need for PPE should we get another wave.
Terrific. Understanding Connor is this is reimbursable under the CARES Act?
Yes, it, it should be, and we will write it off on that. Honor, if I may, we will, we'll put it through our FEMA reimbursement as well. So FEMA reimburses it, they'll reimburse 75, and then we can just use 25 out of the CARES money. If they don't reimburse it for some reason, then the CARES money would cover the whole thing.
Thank you, chief.
Any other questions from the board? All right, thank you, and if somebody would like to make a motion to, to accept or to award Contract HCS 2021-01 Personal Protective Equipment for Municipal COVID-19 Operations to Safety Incorporated, amount on that is $49,033, so maybe we could do an amount not to exceed $50,000 to make it in line with the last one.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Brusart.
Barger Brusart, and a roll call vote.
Barger, yes.
Brusart, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Fulgenetti, yes. Thank you, and thank you, chief and Kristen. And I just want to say that we're, we're very, very lucky that our department heads work together so well to be creative and to, you know, to streamline some of these purchases. So really appreciate you doing that together.
Pleasure.
So the next item on the agenda is Health and Community Services Reorganization Presentation.
So, good evening again. We're here tonight to give you a little bit of an update as to some of the changes that are underway with Health and Community Services. As you know, we're always looking for ways to increase our efficiency and provide centralized services to our residents. As a result of that constant self-evaluation, we did identify two areas that we're currently focusing on. The first position I want to talk to you about is our new Deputy Director of Financial and Veteran Services. You've heard me speak over the past five years on numerous occasions as we've reduced the Veterans Services line item in a number of our budgets, that this is because we have been able to identify other programs that provide equal, if not better, benefits for those in need. There is a lot of historic overlap between these types of programs, such as the tax work-off programs that we currently administer, the one for veterans and one for seniors, as well as broader programs like SNAP, fuel assistance, and rental assistance that are available to veterans as well as others in need. So it seemed like some efficiency could be gained by centralizing the town's assistance for these programs under one member of our leadership team. So I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to our new Deputy Director of Financial Services, a familiar face, Cory Honan. We'll give you an update on a couple of the newer projects that he's gonna be taking the lead on. Cory?
Thank you, Kristen. Hi, everybody. How are you?
Good evening. How are you, Cory?
Good, thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. So just a kind of quick background on, on what Kristen had mentioned. The special town meeting on November 12th, 2019, the town of Easton voted accept Mass General Law Chapter 60, Section 3D, which allowed for the voluntary donation of funds by its residents to be used to defray real estate tax costs of elderly and disabled persons of low income. And then more recently, at a regular scheduled meeting, you all, the Select Board, on January 27th, 2020, voted and created a charged, a charge of taxation aid committee in keeping Mass General Law's Chapter 60, Section 3D. This committee currently has three open seats. The main objective of the committee is to adopt rules and regulations for the fund and to identify individuals who'll be, who will be eligible to receive aid from these donations. So I'd like to use this opportunity to request our residents' support in seating the three open positions. You know, I think can all agree, or at least I can agree with myself, that helping those in need, it's one of the most fulfilling parts of my job and any job. And as a member of this committee, you'll be able to identify those eligible recipients and be a part of the solution to their financial setbacks, problems that they're having, and, you know, be able to make some, some changes for those folks. So if you or someone you know is interested in being considered for this committee, please be in contact to request more information. A day, uh, at the in-town meeting on June 22nd, 2020, the town voted to accept Mass General Law's Chapter 60, Section 3F, which allows for the voluntary donation of funds by its residents to be used to provide support for veterans and dependents in need of immediate assistance with food, transportation, heat, and oil expenses. So in summary, we have two new voluntary donation accounts to assist seniors and veterans of any age. This is in addition to the various programs, services offered locally, federal, state, that we already have in use. And, you know, something important to note is that voluntary checkbox for both of those programs, both of that, those articles that were passed, it'll help change the way that we request and accept donations into these funds and how we outreach to the donors as well as the people in need. So, you know, for instance, someone could see on that bill that there is a checkbox for people to be donating, and that could provide that outreach that we, you know, that is so hard for us to do. We can't reach everybody. But seeing that on there, that there is a fund for that, may cause someone to call, call me or, or anyone in our office to inquire. So I'd just also like to quick mention how the reorganization impacts our veterans as well as the clients of our former outreach coordinator Kathleen Guevea. So in my interactions with, uh, folks that I've worked with, I have heard some concerns that this reorganization might mean that the town of Easton now has a part-time VSO and a part-time outreach coordinator, all under one person being me. And I'd like to stress not the case. What we do have is a full-time dedicated staff of at least two or more Health and Community Services team members working together on the shared issues of our veterans and the general population in need. So, you know, the new structure will not take away from services received by one group or another. I understand it's normal to maybe have those concerns and, and misunderstand something or misinterpret at face value, but it, it will streamline our ability to meet the needs of any residents that are looking for assistance in a simplified, one-stop office, essentially. And I, I welcome anyone who has concerns regarding that. I'm glad to discuss it with them, or I'm sure anyone else would be glad to discuss it with, with you as well. So with that, I'd just like to thank everybody for your support and confidence in me to carry out these new responsibilities. I'm, I'm looking forward to the new role. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory.
Any questions for Cory?
I have one.
Sure.
This is Chuck. Hi, Cory.
Hi, Chuck.
I had visited you a couple of times before the pandemic, and you were in, your office was, was and probably still is in Proddingham Hall. So it seemed like even before this reorganization took place that you were in close proximity to the same kind of issues and department that they were also in Proddingham, right? So you had some sense of familiarity with the people and some of the process, I would imagine?
Yes, Kathleen and I, we worked very closely together on those situations. We kind of bounced ideas off of each other and, and we're very familiar and shared a lot of mutual clients because, you know, there are just, there are so few issues that are, not to minimize it, but there are so few issues that are just because you're a veteran. You know, it's, there, there are, there's food assistance for everyone. There is maybe the food assistance for veterans and food assistance for the general population, so to speak, but those same problems are experienced in the same way by those two groups. So I, I feel I have a lot of, of connection to, to the general population's needs as well.
And veterans' issues will oftentimes intersect with issues of aging as well, as you know.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig, any comments or questions?
Oh, thank you.
Tom?
None, except I appreciate all the effort that you all put in on behalf of some of the most need-based residents in our community. So thank you so much for being so proactive and reaching out and trying to get resources that might be available into their hands that would be needed.
Great. And Mark?
Thank you for all your hard work, and please don't let off the gas, because it seems as though, since a lot of you have been this, Cory, since you have been in this town, you've really stepped up and you just keep excelling. So just don't let off the gas.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And Cory, congratulations on the new position. I know that you're gonna do great things. And you were breaking up a little bit, so if people at home want to volunteer on either of those committees for the Tax Relief Committee or the AARP-friendly community, are those posted on the volunteer part of the website? Will people be able to see those and get more information and sign up directly that way through the website?
Yes, the Taxation Aid Committee vacancies are, actually both, age-friendly, and the Taxation Aid vacancies are on our volunteer page. You could, so you can get to that just by going to our normal website and clicking Volunteer. And it has all the committee vacancies in a form you can fill out right there. There is also a webpage for that tax committee as well.
Great, terrific. Thank you. All right, Kristen, would you like to introduce the next part of your reorganization?
Yes, thank you, Dottie. So the second position I want to talk about is our new Deputy Director of Community Engagement and Programming. Again, you've heard me talk, I know I talk a lot, especially about the things that I care about and feel passionately about. But since the inception of Health and Community Services, it has been my goal to take a look at health through a very broad lens. We've talked before about our efforts to expand programming and provide programming that's interesting and diverse and meets the whole population's needs. In addition to our efforts to expand Council on Aging and Recreation offerings by offering programs like Tai Chi and yoga, the Assistant Town Administrator Michael Blanchard and I have been working towards attaining designation from AARP as an age-friendly community. We have been making steady progress on this through our partnership with Boston University and their Metro Bridge program. And I would like to introduce our new Deputy Director of Community Engagement and Programming, Anne Deely, who can tell you about our planned next steps in completing this process with Metro Bridge this fall and where this project will eventually take us. Anne? You're muted, Anne.
Now, as I said before, good evening, everyone. Nice to see everybody. How are you?
Good, thank you.
This fall, we'll be partnering once again with the Urban Research Methods class through Boston University's Metro Bridge Project to complete the final input step in the path AARP has laid out for us. We'll be using this information gathered in this forum and in past partnerships, including a survey and targeted interviews with residents to find out what's important to them and where they think changes could be made to make Easton a better place to age. We'll be looking at a lot of different areas, facilities, transportation, and programs. And I want to take, again, this opportunity to echo Cory's request for volunteers. Last summer, the Select Board established a committee to help with this project process. So I'm asking people watching if this is something that you would be interested in, like was, that was mentioned before, that you can consider filling out a volunteer form on the town website. And I look forward to working on this project and creating more community engagement through expanded and diverse programming, and I would like to thank you for this opportunity, and I'm very excited to get this, get started. So thank you.
Thank you, Anne. You've been a part of the town in a lot of different ways for a long time, so we really appreciate you stepping up to take on this new role. I think it's very well-suited to you, and you're gonna do amazing things. Any of the board members have any comments or questions? Craig?
Congratulations, Anne and Cory, and we, we look forward to working with you as we have in the past.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Absolutely. Congrats and thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you both taking the time to be here tonight, and thank you, Kristen, for all that you've done. It's nice to see your face. Haven't seen you in a while. You've been buried in all of the COVID work that we've been doing, so we really appreciate all of your efforts on that as well.
Thank you very much. As you can see, we have two great leaders who are poised to do great things with these supportive programs for our residents, and it's definitely needed. In the past six weeks, just a little bit of lightning of my load has made a huge difference in our ability to move forward as we move into the next phase of dealing with COVID and as things like AAA start creeping up and we are having discussions about the schools and the colleges. It's nice to know that there are two such capable people picking up and taking charge of these areas.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right, the next item on our gen, agenda is a presentation by the Audit Committee and the Finance Director about the fiscal, I'm sorry, tongue-tied here, the Fiscal Year 2019 Audit. So Wendy, there she is.
And also with me tonight is Jennifer Starr, also a member of the Audit Committee.
Great.
Leonard Berkowitz, who's the, the chair, was not able to make it, so Jen is here in his place.
Great, thank you so much.
Great, thanks, everybody. So we'll just give a brief overview of the Audit Committee's activity for 2019 and then hit the highlights of the Fiscal Year 2019 Audit Review, which was just completed a couple of weeks ago. So during 2019, the Audit Committee, early in the year, finalized its review of the Operational Audit Report that had been prepared by the Abrams Group, and Len Berkowitz presented a summary of the items that were implemented or not and an update on those recommendations to the Select Board back in February of 2019. In January of 2019, we met with the, the town's auditors Melonson Heath to review the Fiscal Year 2018 Audit. That audit was issued an unqualified or clean opinion. We then met later in the year, in November, to touch base on the status of the Fiscal 2019 Audit Preparation and to go over some of the items that are in, that were in the management letter from 2018, which are all routine housekeeping items. So, uh, let's see. In 2020, we met a few weeks ago to, with Melonson Heath to review the results of the Fiscal Year 2019 Audit. So for this year, we had requested a new partner, so we're happy with Melonson Heath and the work that they do, but it's a audit best practice to have a fresh set of eyes looking at your books periodically. So we had a new partner, Ed Boyd, who led the audit and attended our meeting a few weeks ago. As with prior years, they found the books and records to be in good working order. The accounts were reconciled on a timely basis, and they issued an unmo, an unqualified or clean opinion. Some of the highlights from the 2019 Fiscal Year Audit that Mr. Boyd pointed out were the positive trend in the unassigned fund balance over the past four years. So that's the, the good work and the discipline that had been in place around building up all of the reserve funds. We naturally then led into a discussion that with COVID, that's not going to be the case going forward and that we are unfortunately having to access those funds. Mr. Boyd agreed, though, that the point of the stabilization fund is that it's a rainy day fund, and to quote him, "It's pouring out." So based on the work they're doing with other communities, we're in very good company with having to access those funds. And he doesn't think that that would have a negative impact on our, our bond rating or their, their view of our financial discipline going forward. We talked a little bit about the debt burden. He commented that the debt burden is manageable and that 86% of it will be paid off in 10 years, then gave us a comparison that for AAA-rated communities, a benchmark for that would be 75%. So we're actually ahead of some AAA-rated communities in terms of debt schedule. He also commented that on the business activity side, the Water and Sewer Fund would be 52% paid off in 10 years, which is reflective of the long-term nature of the sewer project. We then discussed the pension and OPEB liabilities, and this dovetails with, back at our November meeting, Len Berkowitz had asked Wendy to put together an analysis of our pension assessment growth over time. So Wendy had put that together, and over time, compared, going back to Fiscal Year 2010, our general fund's average annual budget increase has been 2.75%. Our pension assessment increase on an annual basis has been 6.14%. So our pension assessment growth rate is more than double our general fund. So I, I know that's probably not news to anybody, anybody who's hearing that, but just again goes to reiterate how there are some of those assessed budget items that are not on anything that we can control, Bristol County Retirement Board. They give the assessment, it is what it is, and we have to meet it. We did discuss with the pension liability the fact that it's based on, the last valuation had the funding schedule for Bristol County going out to 2028. So the projection, and Wendy can correct me if I'm misstating anything here, was that, you know, we would be fully funded at, at around 2028 and then could shift some of that assessment to building up OPEB reserves. So we expect that with COVID, that will impact the overall funding schedule for the pension. And we understand that the Bristol County Retirement is, is looking at reducing the discount rate. So we're thinking that we'll see some changes in the liability schedule going forward. Wendy, is there anything to add there?
Yeah, I would like to just add that the Bristol County Retirement Board, they recently completed a new actuarial evaluation, and they had a new, a new actuary doing the valuation, and some of the assumptions changed. Some of it was recommended by PERAC anyway, and there, they haven't finalized the, um, the report or their funding schedule yet, but at a minimum, we're looking at extending the funding schedule out another four years. That's, um, that's what the actuary is, is recommending. He presented several different scenarios, several different discount rates, and, and gave a projection of what the percentage increases would be for the pension assessment. So you're looking at anywhere from an additional four to, you know, potentially seven. A group of us met, went, or attended their Zoom meeting that they had to present the findings of, of the actuarial study. And, um, you know, several of us, you know, requested that to give, to give some. And, you know, several of us, you know, requested that to give to give some relief to those communities, you know, with everything going on. That they extended out longer, but there's a guaranteed eight percent increase for next year. That that's not going to change, but they could do eight percent and then. We requested that they send it that they extended out another seven years, which would mean increases of under four percent for the years thereafter.
Okay, thanks, Wendy.
But at a minimum, it's it will be, you know, more than so 2028 is not going to be the final year for the large increases. We're looking at a minimum of another four years, which would be 2032. And but at the point that the pension assessment is fully funded, that will drop down significantly. It will be a great opportunity for us to then. Really increase our funding for OPEB liabilities. And post-employment benefits for the health insurance.
In that amount, as of June 30th, 2019, the OPEB liability in the audit report was a hundred seventeen million. And as you're probably all aware, we have very, very, very little saved against that. Which our auditor assures us is extremely common. So we're again in good company there.
That's one of the biggest issues that the Mass Municipal Association talks about with its member communities across the state because really every every community is just in the same boat. But Bristol County is trying to accelerate the payments on that to bring them in a little bit closer. So I think they're doing as good of a job as they can.
Yep. Um, so the Fiscal Year 2020 Audit Work has started. The expectation is the work would go into October, November and that the Audit Committee would get its presentation. To it by early 2021. And then finally, we've had some some movement in membership over the past year. So Len Berkowitz, Member at Large, is still the Committee Chair. Chuck King is still our representative from the Select Board. I replaced Nancy DeLuca and moving from my Member at Large position to the School Committee Representative in 2019. So we thank Nancy for her service. Steve Marsh replaced me to finish out my term as a Member at Large. So we thank him for his service. He was recently replaced by Stephanie Elia. Who was appointed after the most recent election cycle. And we also thank Roberta Vervell, who wrapped up her appointment from the Finance Committee Representative standpoint. And she has been replaced by Jennifer Stacy. That's all I had. Do we have any questions?
Craig, anything?
Thank you for your service, Jennifer.
You're very welcome.
Tom?
Good. Thank you so much. It was a good comprehensive update. Nice to see that we came through with some good recommendations and we're in good stead regarding our fiscal behaviors, so to speak. And again, thank you for the effort, like Craig said.
Doc?
As a member of the committee, I wish to commend Jen Starr for her excellent presentation this evening. And thank Wendy for her excellent service to our committee all year long.
Yes, for sure.
And Mark?
Thank you, Jen, and I have no comments or questions.
All right. Thank you both ladies. The one thing that I that stuck out to me is changing the accounting firm. I know that that or the audit firm, that had come up a few times in the past. So. I am glad to see that 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 did happen this year. And as you said, that is a best practice. So it looks like you you're, you know, everything seems to be going in a very orderly fashion for that committee.
Thank you. Just to be just to clarify, we didn't change the firm. We kept the firm, but changed the partner at the firm who did who did the work.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here tonight. I know you're very busy on the School Committee.
Yeah, we got we got a lot going on there. Yeah. All right. Well, thanks. Thanks for your time, everybody.
Thanks, Jen.
Good night.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
So next we have a contract award, WAT 2021-01, Engineering for a Water Treatment Plant with Environmental Partners.
Dottie, if I could, the next, I think literally half dozen items, the next six items are contracts. Major infrastructure and design contracts relating to public works that Director Field is on. And I'm gonna ask him to take over the narrative piece on those from me. But before I do, I just want to take a quick minute to announce something I learned today, which is that. Dave has been nationally recognized by the American Public Works Association. As a 2020 Professional Manager of the Year for Engineering and Technology. This award recognizes outstanding achievements in the area of engineering and technology within public works that inspire excellence, leadership and dedication to the public good. Specifically, APWA noted Dave's track record here in Easton, dramatically expanding our GIS capabilities, both for our in-house. Project management, for our capital asset management, as well as for external GIS layers that are available to everyone, whether it's for reporting down trees. Finding hydrants, looking at property value information, the GIS maps have been used to integrate with economic development plans for realtors and zoning overlays. We have voting precincts in there. We have pretty much everything in there and Dave has led that in his tenure. So I mean, we we're obviously familiar with and very happy to have Dave, whether it's his long-term capital planning, project management or GIS work he's done. You know, it's my firm belief that we're all lucky and the Town of Easton is lucky to have Dave here and that's now not a secret in Easton and it's been nationally recognized. So. Kudos to you, Dave. I think that the timing of that award is fitting the heels of the biggest construction project we've ever done. Coming to a close and we're very lucky to have you. And I know you hate these kind of things and. You just want to do your work and not talk about this stuff, but I would be remiss not to say thank you and congratulate you as I turn it over to you to talk about the next six contracts. So.
Thank you, Connor. I appreciate that. And I want to thank my colleagues in the New England APWA Chapter who nominated me, put together a very extensive packet for the award and it's much appreciated. So thank you. The first item I have tonight is, as Dottie said, the contract award for Environmental Partners for the engineering for the water treatment plant. This is a contract. Related to the design of permitting for a 1.69 million gallon per day green sand water treatment plant to service wells three, five and seven. Environmental Partners Group has previously completed the pilot testing for this plant under a separate contract. The purpose of this plant is to improve water quality by reducing iron and manganese present in those wells. The proposed contract is nine hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. One million dollars was appropriated at town meeting in June for that purpose. Additional engineering scope will be required in the future. In for future bidding and construction services and the total project cost, including designing, construction is estimated at just over twelve million dollars. I recommend award of this contract.
Any questions from the board? Okay, if somebody would like to make a motion to award the Engineering for the Water Treatment Plan to Environmental Partners Group. And the amount on that is nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, David?
Correct.
Oh, Roger.
Second, Broussard.
Okay, Roger Broussard and a real call vote.
Roger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Well, Jeanette, yes. The next item is contract award, WAT.
I froze up there for a second, but Environmental Partners Group is. Is WAT 2021-02 for engineering services for PFAS preparedness study. This contract is for engineering services related to PFAS in wells one, two and four and to determine the best treatment process and other treatment alternatives. PFAS are a group of man-made chemicals that are newly regulated by Mass DEP. PFAS have been found at levels above twenty parts per trillion in those wells that were previously listed. This contract is an amount of one hundred and eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Hundred and ten thousand dollars was appropriated at town meeting in June for that purpose. In addition, we have applied to Mass DEP for a grant to fund this project. And if it's successful, we'll use those funds instead of the appropriated monies. Grant announcement is anticipated this month. I recommend award of this contract.
Great. Thank you. Sorry, I got kicked off the call there for a minute. If there any questions from the board on this?
I do have, right, Craig?
Go ahead, Mark. Go ahead.
I do have a question. In the previous item on the agenda, it's engineering for a water treatment plant, which makes perfect sense to me, engineering for a water treatment plant. But engineering for a study, I don't know. There's something I'm not understanding. I've never heard of engineering for a study.
Well, it's a, I'm sorry, it's well, it's engineering services. They're providing engineering services for you and the services they're providing is a PFAS preparedness study to go over all the alternatives. And to point us in the right direction on where we should be going to treat for PFAS.
Okay, thank you.
My question was, I'm sorry, go ahead, Connor.
So am I correct? Basically, this is basically a really complex engineering survey that looks at our water supply, tries to do source identification. Looks at what's in the market and what different type of treatment options are available and what the associated engineering would look like for those options for the community.
That's correct. It'll include bench testing and come up with different alternatives. Once we decide an alternative which we will pursue, then we would go into a full design of that, similar to a treatment plant, whatever components we would need.
My question may not be able to answer, but is there some anticipated cost of a treatment plant of this scope?
Until we do this study, no, it's it's too difficult to determine, too many variables to determine. So this is going to kind of lead us to that so we could. Determine what our solution would be and to then go for funding, hopefully by grants or other means, but if necessary, town funding for a solution.
I have another question. All right. The previous agenda item, Engineering for Water Treatment Plant, that was for wells three, five and seven. This is for wells one, two and four, is that, I know we have covered this in prior meetings, but I don't know it off the top of my head. Is wells three, five and seven, the ones that don't that haven't PFAS has not been detected in? Okay. What if? When that's being engineered. Wells three, five and seven, the treatment facility. Within the engineering, will it have an ability to upgrade to PFAS treatment or filtration? That's a really hard question. I'm just trying to see into the future a little bit and anticipate to have a cost savings of what might occur.
Yeah, that's something we've looked at. So wells three, five and seven have PFAS levels below ten parts per trillion. So there's no action needed. There's no testing requirements for those continued testing requirements. If we were over ten parts per trillion, we'd be doing quarterly tests. For PFAS, but understanding that this is an emerging contaminant and things may change in the future. We are most likely going to design a well building that will have space available for treatment if necessary. But we're not specifically designing that treatment because it's unnecessary at this point. So they will, they are going to take into account space for it for the future, but they're not going to complete a design for carbon filters or anything to treat for PFAS because it's unnecessary in those wells at this time.
Thank you. Dave, I do have a question as well. So this grant that we're applying for, this is just a grant to fund the specific study, engineering study that we are discussing today. Does it have anything to do with anything to address any issues that we might find in the forward to support us solving a problem, should it exist as a result of this study?
So the grant, the maximum allowable grant was two hundred thousand dollars. So we've actually applied for that. And if we do receive that, we'll probably add some scope in there to start the design process or narrow down our alternatives. And go a little further than this study. As written was going to do. So we would be back for an amendment if we were successful in getting that grant, we would probably take it a step further.
But it doesn't really, if it does turn out to be a problem that requires us to build a treatment component aspect to it, this grant doesn't address that, that would come to follow. And Connor or Dave, are there grants at that point that are available from the state and or guidance or funds available to assist us? Should we indeed determine that we have a problem with PFAS in our community?
So the short answer is no, not that we know of. This was part of what we flagged in our commentary to the DEP as a major, in my opinion, looming infrastructure crisis of a Commonwealth. You know, when you change the magnification of your, what the tool you're using to look for things, you find it in more places, right? And that's what happened. So we were on the front edge of that through testing in 2019 and we are working and will continue to work to do the right thing and stay ahead of it. But we've been moving down this path, knowing full well and being clear with the public and the board that this could be very costly. We don't know the exact cost, but you just voted for engineering for a green sand plant that'll cost ten million dollars.
Right.
So we will move forward with whatever infrastructure planning we need to, that's appropriate under the regulations and for public health. But no, our, we do, we're not aware of any program right now and given the economic climate we're now in, I. You know, we're not going to hang our hat on the hopes that the Commonwealth is going to make tens of millions of dollars for PFAS treatment plants available. And because if they had to scale that up to all the communities where this is going to rear its head, they'd be talking hundreds of millions of billions of dollars. So of course, we will go after any and all grant opportunities when we get there, which we always do. But no, it's very likely we will be paying a substantial portion of this. We would do that through the water system. As the board knows, you just voted rate increases on that. We would need to do additional rate increases to offset the cost of debt service. For that, but that that's, you know, the ten million dollar question. And that's what we put back to the Commonwealth, which is obviously, we don't question DEP's role and rights to regulate. And if this is an emerging contaminant that could have issues, we want that to be treated appropriately, but. You know, there's no major money attached to actually fixing the problem, which we didn't create. We did not put PFAS in the water, which is part of why we signed the town on to the class action lawsuit at your last meeting. Well, after the manufacturers of these substances.
Thank you.
It's really important to note.
Yeah, no, I think that's important. I think it's important for us to not only be acting with a sense of urgency and trying to stay ahead of it. I appreciate Dave and Connor and all of our ability to. Or desire to do so, to kind of stay ahead of it and act with urgency. And I certainly think we have to continue to try to find ways to solve for what may be a potentially very expensive solution, not just in the filtering, but if there's any remediation necessary that has to be done. Throughout town or that affects our water, there could be ancillary costs from that as well. So thank you, Dave. Thank you, Connor, for the update. That's all I had, Dottie.
Hey, who else have questions?
One more comment. I'm sorry. Connor, you brought me to something and it's 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 common. It's not a question, but I've seen a lot of frustration of people towards the town about PFAS in the water. And you said it, Connor. Town of Easton did not put PFAS in the water. This is a result of business and, you know, decades and decades of pollution, not by the Town of Easton. So though it is in our water, we did not put it there. We are here to try and solve it and make it better. And I just wanted to be very clear with that.
Sure. And let me add on to that. We're also doing it much faster than.
Thank you. Yes. We didn't have, yeah.
We we kind of may feel like we were sticking out of the pack last November, but that's because we, our response to DEP suggesting that we put basically a webpage up that says, hey, we have PFAS. Was okay, let's have a public meeting and invite everyone and talk about this and start developing engineering solutions right now, not when we are forced to. Under the DEP's regulations, towns the size of Easton don't even need to start testing, I believe, Dave, till October. Is that about somewhere around?
October 20th, I think.
October of this year. So there are lots of communities the size of Easton who haven't even measured. They don't even know. So I appreciate that frustration and that's why we're getting on this so quickly and much more quickly than most.
And just a couple of things that I would want to add is that this is, it's not like there's been an increase in PFAS in the water. They changed the measure for how it's measured. So they used to. So they used to, um, test for parts per millions with an M, and now it's parts per trillions with a T. So it's not like something changed all of a sudden in our water supply recently. It's just the way that they're testing is, uh, much more refined. The other thing is that for communities, um, that have come forward and disclosed, uh, the testing. Eastern was really the only one that did something very proactive, and that was, you know, um, the brainchild of Connor and David and, and the team to offer a rebate for a PFAS water filter, which is on the, um, town's website, on the water department's page. And people, including myself, did take advantage of that. So, um, I'd recommend that people read up on that, look on the website. And if you do, um, plan to, uh, get a filter for your home, uh, there's some guidelines of the kinds that are eligible for the rebate and take advantage of that while it's out there. All right. Um, if somebody would like to make a motion to, um, award contract W A T 2021 dash O two, engineering for PFAS preparedness study to the Environmental Partners Group Incorporated in the amount of $108,500.
So move, Barger.
Second, we saw.
So that's Barger Broussard and a roll call vote.
Barger, yes.
We saw, yes.
King, yes.
I am, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Great. And the next contract award, W A T 2021 dash O three is for Pond, Washington and Prospect Street Water Main Improvements Project. Um, uh, potentially being awarded to Dig It Construction LLC.
Thank you, Dottie. I have that contract as D P W 2021 dash zero three, but, uh, just for clarification.
Okay, so corrected.
But that, that is for Dig It Construction LLC for the construction of a water main improvement, uh, project, which would consist of uh, water main replacement on Pond Street and repairs to water main crossings under Washington Street and Prospect Street. Bids for this project were opened on July 10th. We received 11 bids total. A dig at construction was found to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the project with a bid price of $666,076 and 20 cents. Uh, $950,000 was appropriated town meeting in June for this purpose. I recommend award of the contract to Dig It Construction.
Terrific. I know this, um, water project has been holding up the pavement on Pond Street too. So I'm sure the people on Pond Street are gonna be very relieved to see this move forward. Any, um, comments or questions on this from the other board members? Okay, if someone would like to make a motion to contract award D P W 2021 dash O three, Pond, Washington and Prospect Street Water Main Improvements Project awarded to Dig It Construction LLC in the amount of $666,076 and 20 cents.
Second, we saw.
Barger Broussard and a roll call.
Barger, yes.
We saw, yes.
King, yes.
I am, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Thank you. Yep.
You mean, before we move on from the water contracts, um, I just want to make one comment. I know it's on the agenda, but I just want to bring everyone's attention to our water restrictions. We are currently in a phase two water restriction, which allows two times a week watering for households. That is, uh, dictated based on our river gauge readings. And we're getting very close to having to go down to a phase three restriction, which would be one day a week. So it, I don't want it to be a surprise. Uh, it may happen this week. Uh, the, the gauge readings have been dropping steadily for a while, been very dry. So I just want to bring everyone's attention to that. We may be instituting a phase three water band in the near future unless we get some significant rain.
Thanks for mentioning that, David. That's, we appreciate that.
That's good to know. Um, and maybe we could do something through a social media to let people know when that happens, if it happens this week before our next meeting.
We will. Goes into effect, yeah.
Sure. Okay, um, the next item on the, is a contract award, D P W 2021 dash O two, Northeastern Village Wastewater Treatment Plant Operations and Maintenance to Weston and Sampson.
Thank you. This contract is for the operation and maintenance of the North, Northeastern Village Wastewater Treatment Plant in four pump stations at Queesit and, uh, Five Corners as well. Uh, funding for this contract is included in the D P W sewer enterprise budget. The contract value is $99,600. This is a one-year contract with two one-year options available. Weston and Sampson was selected as the, uh, as a result of a request for proposals for the operation of both the school wastewater treatment plant and the Northeastern Village wastewater treatment plant. The school will be entering into a separate contract, uh, with Weston and Sampson. I recommend award of this contract.
Any comments or questions? Okay, um, if someone would like to make a motion to, uh, award contract, D P W 2021 dash O two for Northeastern Village Wastewater Treatment Plant Operation and Maintenance to Weston and Sampson in the amount of $99,600.
So moved, Barger.
Second, we saw.
Barger Broussard and a roll call vote. Roger.
Roger, yes.
We saw, yes.
King, yes.
I am, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Thank you. Next is, uh, number 10, discussion and vote, Depot's Depot Street land takings and related land use issues for Depot Street roadway improvements. Transportation Improvement Program tip.
Daddy, before we get started on that, um, because, um, I am president of Temple High Shalom, which is on Depot Street, corner of Depot and Central. I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion and this vote. So I don't know if you put me into, or if, if, um, Michael can put me into the waiting room or whatever, so that I'm not part of the discussion or the vote. And then you could then bring me back. I, I'm not sure how to do that, Connor, so.
Well, you don't need to necessarily be taken off camera. You can just mute yourself and not participate, and that would be fine.
As long as it's in the minutes that, that I've recused myself.
Yes, we'll reflect to the minutes that you have recused yourself.
And great.
Okay, uh, can you, uh, everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, we're here to talk about the Depot Street quarter improvements and our need for, uh, easements along that corridor. Uh, just to give everyone a brief overview of the project scope, uh, the project on Depot Street, uh, stretches from Foxtrot Road to Washington Street. The project will result in a new road surface, sidewalks on one side, bike lanes, improved drainage and installation of new water main. Uh, a new traffic signal will be installed at Center Street. And the estimated cost of this project is $10 million, which is gonna be paid by state and federal government funds as part of the tip project. Uh, easements are required from a total of 116 properties along the corridor. The project cannot be advertised for bid until the easements have been obtained by the town of Easton. Uh, there are several different types of easements. Temporary easements, which are, last for a duration of five years, and those are temporary in nature and just to allow the workers to blend the existing, uh, the new roadway into the existing parcels. Uh, there are highway easements, which will be permanent right-of-way easements. Uh, there are permanent utility easements, which are for overhead utility poles and for guy wires. And there are a couple, uh, drainage easements as well. Just to bring everyone, uh, re- back to the project timeline, this project began design in 2011. Uh, we had our 25% public hearing in June of two, two, 2018. Uh, we last met with the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, uh, in October 2019. Uh, as part of that easement process, we began outreach letters in July of 2019. Uh, easement takings were approved at special town meeting in November of 2019. Offer letters were sent to owners, uh, this past July. And we're here tonight to discuss the order of taking. Uh, after this, uh, the project will be scheduled to be advertised in November of 2020, and we anticipate construction in 2021. Uh, so property owners will be const- compensated, uh, by the town for any easements that are taken. Uh, the value of the compensation, uh, has been determined by real estate appraisers. Both a primary appraisal and a secondary review appraisal. So two different appraisers have looked at the costs. Uh, the total cost, uh, for the easements on this product is $785,640. Uh, a select board vote to take the easements and alter the layout of Depot Street. There is also a dedication of municipal parcels, uh, document that we're gonna ask the select board to uh, vote on as well, and that will dedicate existing town parcels, uh, so that those, uh, road, those easements can be used, uh, during road construction. So after the order of taking, uh, is, uh, voted, uh, if it is voted, uh, the orders will be, uh, recorded, the registry of deeds. Uh, letters will then be sent out to all the property owners, notifying them of the taking and the award of damages. And then the property owners will need to sign in returns and forms. Each property owner will receive, uh, by certified mail, a form for a release and a form for pro tanto acknowledgement. In both cases, the owners can, uh, collect their checks. Um, but the pro tanto is reserves their right to challenge at a future date. And there's also a W nine, which we're asking, uh, the owners to fill out. We'll then send them a check, uh, once we receive all those forms back. That's all I have. So I, I imagine there'll be a lot of questions. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone does have.
Sure. So we'll open this up. I'll go through to the board members in our usual order. And when all the board member questions are done, we'll take questions through the Q and A. Uh, just a reminder, if you do have a question through, through the Q and A, we're gonna be answering questions as it pertains in general to the project. If you have specific questions on your specific property, we're gonna ask you to contact the town, uh, directly on that. And remember again to put your name and your address in the chat for our minutes. So we'll start with you, Tom. Do you have any, uh, questions on this?
I do not have any questions at this time.
Okay, Chuck.
I do not.
Mark Lamb.
I do. Um, so, uh, this may have been covered in a prior meeting, but, uh, $785,000 in, uh, land taking. So where, where exactly is that money coming from, just for everybody who's watching, the 785,000?
Yep, that's a great question. Uh, special town meeting in November of 2019 appropriated $800,000 for the land taking, so we can get this project done. The town of Easton is, is paid for the design of the project. We have to pay for land takings to leverage that state and federal money for the construction.
So the, the money was appropriated in 2019. So this is prior to all that's going on right now in the world, the appropriate money. Um, okay, just wanted that to be clear. And, uh, when is the estimate for when construction begins, the estimated date? I know it hasn't even gone out to bid, but you have an idea of when it's going out to bid and when the bids do.
Uh, so right now, we anticipate, uh, construction would begin in the spring of 2021. So it's, it's scheduled for advertising in November. Mass D O T advertises their projects. It's usually about four to five months before it's awarded and, and construction can then begin. So we anticipate it'd be the spring of 2021.
Okay. And my last question is, what side of the street is the sidewalk gonna go on?
So it varies. So it's on the south side, uh, for a while, uh, beginning at Foxtrot Road, and then it switches over to the north side. Uh, somewhere around Prospect Street. But it stays on one side only. It just flops at one point.
Okay. Did you say Prospect Street?
I'm the Purchase Street, sorry.
Okay. Gotcha. I'm, threw me off too. Uh, those are all my questions, Dottie.
Great, thank you. Um, so, um, we did have a question that the person didn't identify their name and address. So I typed back to them in the chat to, um, send that back through. And when I do, when I type a question back, the question disappears. So please, uh, restate your question with your name and address. We do have a question from Darius Zayas at, um, Depot Street. By asking for a W nine, does that mean the easement payments are taxable? And also, is there an estimated timeline for payments to be issued?
Connor, do you, uh, have any info on that? The W nine, as far as I know, is for, uh, to make sure that everything is right on the, right on the checks, but I, I don't know if it's taxable.
Yeah, I, I don't know the intricacies of Massachusetts and federal, uh, tax law, so I can't answer that. We'll check. Um, and we'll, uh, make that information available. Uh, but we do need that information to get the checks cut to people. Um, and the second part of that question, Dave, was, uh, can you just give a kind of summary of after the board's votes tonight, what does the timeline look like for recording paperwork getting sent to these property owners? They have to fill that stuff out, send it back to you to get a check, right? Can you?
Yes. So I, I, it's, it's gonna be several weeks. Uh, the recording will most likely happen next week. We're waiting for the conservation commission has, uh, will be entertaining the dedication of municipal parcels as well, I believe on Thursday. So we, we hope that this will be recorded next week. Once it's recorded, we're gonna, we have to prepare 116 certified mail, uh, letters with all the information for each property owner. So that'll probably go out within the week after that. Um, and then as soon as we get back, uh, property owners' forms, uh, they do have to be notarized, uh, in their W nine. We'll go ahead and cut checks. That process usually takes two to three weeks, uh, to, to get those back out. And we'll do those on a rolling basis as we get, uh, forms in. We'll immediately process those on the next week's warrant and go from there. So overall, I think four to six weeks is probably a realistic timeframe, uh, for that. But it's really gonna depend on how quickly people get back to us.
Terrific, thank you. Um, so another question from Phil Malouf at 231 Depot Street is can you explain the future traffic patterns at the intersection of Center and Depot and how the street light will impact the butters to that intersection? I'm sorry, that was, um, the Hood family, 369 Depot. Got to, uh, I mixed up two addresses there.
There, there will be a, there'll be a traffic signal, uh, at Center and Depot, um, and it's gonna operate, uh, like, uh, most normal traffic signals would. That's something, the operation in, in the impacts to a butters, uh, was something that was really identified in the 25% hearing. Um, I'd be more than happy to show anyone the plans, but I'm not really sure what they're referring to as far as the impacts.
Dave, to be clear about what, just the, the big picture view of what's happening at Center and Depot, is that, if that's gonna kind of straighten that out and make it a proper four-way uh, intersection with a traffic light, um, rather than, uh, the, the kind of rotary around the monument that we have now, so it should improve safety and access and make the road more usable. And we're gonna move the monument a little bit to the northwest, where people can actually access it, rather than having it surrounded by traffic, right?
That's correct. It, it straightens.
Improvement to that, uh, piece of road.
Yeah, it straightens up the intersection. The monument does move to basically where the existing roadway is now, where people coming down Center Street go on to, uh, Depot to the right. And Porter Street's realigned, so it's a, a cross from Center Street, so that can act as a four-way intersection.
Okay, great. And you have the plans of this. Are these on the website also?
Uh, no, the plans themselves aren't, but the, um, we did go through this at the select board meeting in a 25% and put out the, uh, renditions of what the, uh, monument relocation looks like. Uh, we don't have a project website for this yet, uh, because we're, we're not out to construction, but that's probably something we'll, we'll move to do in the future as we get closer, like we did with Five Corners. And give people updates and let people, and, you know, see all the information that's out there.
Okay, terrific. Um, the next question is from Corey Whalen at 131 Depot Street. Can you, can you better explain the terminology on the legend and what this will look like in physical form? For example, on our map, I see four foot by 60 feet of permanent utility. Will that be sidewalk, underground water main or overhead wires?
Okay, it looks like, uh, they're referring to, uh, the map they received with their letter. Um, so everyone's configuration and easements are different, but a permanent utility easement is for two reasons. One would be a guy wire, which is usually something that anchors the utility pole. The utility poles we located within the, the right-of-way. And a guy wire would then extend into the property, and that's usually, uh, perpendicular to the property, goes in about 10 feet. Um, the rest of the easements are for, other permanent utility easements are for the overhead wires. So a, a utility pole has a cross arm and usually has three main wires at the top of that cross arm. Where those cross arms cross over someone's property, we're required to obtain a permanent utility easement for the wires themselves overhead. So it's really no impact to most people's property. It's just the way that the, uh, we have to do that with Mass D O T in federal highway now. It's just the way that the, we have to do that with Mass DOT in federal highway now. We're required to get an easement for the aerial overhead wires. So if a wire crosses someone's property a little bit, that's what the permanent utility easement's for.
Okay, great. Philip Malouf at, whoops, two thirty-one Depot Street. Hold on a second. Michael stopped making these jump around. He's deleting, and Michael's deleting some of the Q and A, so it's bouncing around on my screen. You stated this sidewalks on the south side and flips to the north side. Our info states the sidewalk is only on the south side.
It, it does flip, but everyone, depending on the map that you received, is going to be where, where the sidewalk is, so.
Right, so specifically, everyone for the board certification, Dave, every single person along this road has been provided a, a map of what it looks like relative to their property. So on, someone maybe looking at a map that shows a sidewalk on the south side, which is consistent with what you've said, it could just be on the north side somewhere farther down the project.
Nobody's looking at an overall map.
Yeah, actually, you know, you know what, I, I do apologize. It, it, we did change that into the hundred percent, so it is south side only. I apologize.
I'm sorry, south side is the center school side, right?
Yes, so it is south side only. I apologize.
All right, and also by Philip Malouf is, you are not sure if the compensation is not taxable. So you're also not sure if state and federal taxes will be withheld. So I would say that that is something that we can confirm. You know, when we, when we confirm about the taxable amount. And it may depend also on how much the, how much the, the payment is. If it's a small payment, it might be different than a big payment, I would imagine. Chuck probably knows more about that being a CPA.
It's a real estate transaction, and it's, you make money off a real estate transaction, so there's taxes to pay on the real estate transaction. I think that's really what it comes down to.
Yeah, I think everybody should consult their, their tax advisor. And correct treatment would most likely be treated as, depending upon the length of ownership, either short-term or capital gains. But again, the appropriate advice is to reach out to your local tax professional and get your own personal guidance for your own situation. I agree with you, Mark.
I do not believe taxes withheld from our check. And we're asking for the W nine because that's the laws we have to go on. When we pay anyone over a thousand dollars, we need a W nine. So that's required. Whether it's taxable or not, I do not know. And I agree, the Mr. Bissard statement, contact the tax attorney. But we are requiring a W nine because that's what's required by us of any vendor we pay. And just because we're paying these payments and some of them are in excess of a thousand dollars, we're required to get that W nine.
Terrific. So there are no other questions in the chat. And again, if, if people still had questions or you have questions at home, please feel free to email them into mblanchard@easton MA US. And someone will get back to you. If there are no other questions, I'm going to make a motion to adopt the order of taking associated with the Depot Street Tip Program as presented in the referenced document titled Town of Easton Commonwealth of Massachusetts Select Board Order of Taking, dated August tenth, two thousand twenty, and to authorize the award of damages as set forth therein, and to incorporate the full text of that vote order in, I'm sorry, full text of that vote slash order into the minutes of the meeting and further authorize Connor Reed, Town Administrator, and David Field, Director of Public Works, to take any and all actions necessary to complete the land takings process. Could I get a second?
Second, Chuck King.
So that's Full Janetti King and a roll call vote, starting with you, Tom.
You're sorry, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. So that's four yes, and Selectman Barger recused himself. The next vote is a motion to adopt the dedication of municipal parcels associated with the Depot Street Tip Project as presented in the reference document titled Commonwealth of Massachusetts Town of Easton Dedication of Municipal Parcels, dated August tenth, two thousand twenty, and to incorporate the full text of that vote slash dedication into the minutes of the meeting. Can I get a second?
Second, you're sorry.
That's Full Janetti Broussard, and a roll call vote, starting with you, Tom.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. So that's four yes, and Selectman Barger recused himself. Thank you very much. So that is item ten. Item eleven, depart, wow, we really are getting good use of you tonight, David. The next up item is for the Department of Public Works update Northeastern Village Infrastructure Project, Phase One A Mass Works.
Thank you. Since our last discussion about the scaled-down project on May eighteenth, we've confirmed with Mass Works that a scaled-down project was possible and that grant funding could be used for that purpose. We're currently working with the utility companies to modify the design, obtain their estimates on their costs. And we're designing streetscape and utility improvements right now. We hope to come back before the board in the fall with our plans and get your comments. And then we're planning after that to go out to bid over the winter and have construction beginning in the spring of two thousand twenty-one. That's my update. Any questions?
Craig, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you.
Any questions on this? Chuck? Mark?
Yes.
I know, I got a lot of questions. So this is going to be, you guys are going to put, put it together and then it's going to come before us. Design is going to come before us before it goes out to bid. So who is actually going to be part of the design of, of this?
So.
I know you, Dave.
Yep, so we're going to work with, obviously, our consultant doing the design. We'll keep Town Administrator's Office planning, DPW in the loop. And we'll then bring this forward and get any comments you have. Right now, what we're looking at is that smaller project with undergrounding from Williams eastward. And then in back of the alley to extend three-phase power to the future developable parcel. And then we're looking at some streetscape enhancements at the crosswalk. Right now, we're looking at a raised crosswalk that would eliminate the need for the landing areas and slope landing areas will allow for more usable space on the sidewalks. And looking at bumping out the sidewalk in front of the restaurants to add more table space. That was one of the comments that we received. So we'll, we'll put that all on paper and we'll bring it in front of everyone. People can comment on it. And then if there are comments, we can make modifications, final ads of design and bid it. Otherwise, you know, we'll bid it if everyone's happy with it. So that's our plan. We've done some design charrettes back in the day. We've already done some improvements on this section, so it's really not a wholesale design element change. Just some modifications to the design, how it is today. Modify that crosswalk and bump out the sidewalk in a little more locations because we can relocate couples parking spots on the east side of the project near Past William Street.
Excellent. I look forward to taking a look at it. Very exciting.
Yes. I think one of the things in the project that I know the Economic Development Council had talked about that we want to be sure to look at, and it may not be included in the funding or the scope of work for this. But we really want to make sure that there's signage attached to this project so that people do know where to park, especially if we are moving around some parking spots. So I don't know that that's a, a super expensive part of a project. But it is something that we wanted to clearly identify where the parking is that's available.
Yeah, we, we can definitely do that. We had DPW, we had originally, I think back eight years ago, tried to do some wayfinding signage and get some funding for that, for a town-wide wayfinding that would, you know, give you all your major destinations, kind of color-coded signs that were easy to read and that were themed for Easton. That never came to fruition with any funding. But, you know, we'd love to do something like that, but in the short term, we can definitely enhance some of the, the parking signs as part of this project for very little cost.
Terrific.
Want to spend as much money as possible from that grant without going over. Play that delicate balancing act.
And we're going to, we'll keep our eye out for new grants for our wayfinding as they pop up too. So that'll be Mark's job, right, Mark?
Yes, it will.
All right, great. Well, thank you very much for that update. And, you know, I really appreciate the flexibility, you know, as this project has, has come about. Things have changed on it, and I appreciate the patience of the business owners and residents in the downtown and the flexibility of Mass Works to still hold on to that award for us because they've been very patient with us as we've looked at changing the scope and, and doing it to really make, you know, make very good use of the funding. And sometimes it's easier just to do something because it was, it was funded. But when you realize that there's a, a better way to use the money, I think they recognize that. And it goes, it's a goodwill for us for future asks from Mass Works. So thanks for all your extra work on this, David and team, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
David, congratulations on your award. Nationally recognized. That's great. Sounds good.
Yes. Dave, I gotta say, I, I was, I was not surprised because I've seen how you've operated for over five years, and I don't know how you do what you do with how little. So it is a well-deserved award and, and I'm very happy. Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate its team effort, so I, I don't want to take too much of the credit, but thank you very much.
Well, we will have to have a little celebration after a week, when socially distancing eases up a little bit. So sorry.
I look forward to that, thank you.
Sorry, we can't be there to shake your hand in person, but virtual handshake and a high five to you and to your team. Thank you very much. So next up is a vote for Amendment of Select Board Policy Number Fifty-Five, the Commission on Disability Handicap Parking Fund.
Sure, so attached to your packet is a proposed amendment to a policy that you recently adopted back in December of two thousand nineteen. This policy established a fund and guidelines for the use of funds received from handicap parking violation tickets in Easton to be used by the Commission on Disability. Following your adoption, the Commission received an opinion from the states, their state corollary, the Massachusetts Office of Disability, that the policy should be revised a little bit to make sure that the funds can only be spent on public purposes, to comply with state law. So that's the proposed amendment to that policy, and it's included in your packet. It's been reviewed by council, who's agreed with the state entity's recommendation. And I would ask that you vote to adopt the policy as amended, please.
Any comments or questions? Okay, so I would take a motion to amend Select Board Policy Number Fifty-Five, the Commission on Disability Handicap Parking Fund, as referenced in the packet.
I'm moved. Barger.
Second, Broussard.
Barger, Broussard, and roll call vote.
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. That's unanimous. Okay, next, the standing COVID update from Connor.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. I will try to be brief since it's been a, a packed agenda. This is the normal update of, you know, regional and national data points, as well as what's going on locally that I try to give a board at every one of your meetings regarding our ongoing response to coronavirus in Easton. Easton's Emergency Management Association continues to meet about three times every week, just touching base to ensure that there is good communication between emergency responders, public health, our office, Public Works, and particularly lately with the schools, given the pretty monumental task that they have in front of them. So we always start looking at the United States and the state drilling down into Easton. So at our last meeting, the United States had just over four million cases of COVID and about a hundred and forty-five thousand folks had lost their life, the illness. Since that last meeting, we're now over five million cases and, and more than fifteen thousand more people in the United States have lost their lives. So cases continue to register quite significantly in other parts of the country. Thankfully, not as much in the northeast, but the United States remains the epicenter of the pandemic. So this is from our last meeting in July. The United States was getting up to the high sixty thousand case, new cases per day on a rolling average. Thankfully, that seven-day rolling peak seems to be on the decline. You know, that seven-day average peaked around sixty-seven thousand new cases of coronavirus in America a day. And it's, it's now ticking downward. One of the other statistics we all keep an eye on is the rate of positivity. So how many, out of the amount of tests being conducted, how many are coming back with somebody being positive for COVID? The last meeting of the United States, that was about eight and a half percent. That's ticked down slightly to about seven and a half, which is moving in a good direction. This is from a really great data aggregation website called the COVID Exit Strategy that has a tremendous suite of interactive maps and data relating to the fifty states' response to coronavirus using gating metrics from the CDC and the White House. What you see here is a map of the United States with the states color-coded for their positive rate. Again, that's a really important metric of how much COVID is spreading within a community is the rate of those tests coming back positive. As you can see in the northeast, things are much better off than in the country. That trend has continued, with the exception of Rhode Island. Rhode Island now has had their positivity rate start ticking up, which has actually resulted in Governor Baker taking some more specific action relating to travel in and out of that state that I will touch on now. So in Massachusetts, as of today, we're at about a hundred and twenty-one thousand cases total during the duration of this pandemic. Just shy of nine thousand folks have lost their life in Massachusetts. And today's positive rate in Massachusetts is under two percent, which is a, a good thing. However, the number of active COVID-nineteen cases in Massachusetts has been ticking up slightly. The active number of cases grew by about twenty-five percent between the end of July and the end of last week, which resulted in Governor Baker last Friday issuing some new restrictions. So these apply to nearly all of us, just as residents of the Commonwealth. As we touched on in the last meeting, and folks are likely aware from the signs on highways and the news, Governor Baker issued a travel order effective August first that applies restrictions for Massachusetts residents who travel outside of the northeast region and return. There's a required form you're supposed to fill out. It provides information of a DPH that in the event anyone is ill, they can more effectively do the critical task of contact tracing. If you come in from out of state, you're expected to quarantine. Or, sorry, if you come in from non-allowed states, you are expected to quarantine absent proof of a COVID negative test. Here, this could result in state. Last Friday, the governor announced some new restrictions and changes to the state's reopening, again, in response to some uptick in cases. Rhode Island has seen an increase in a positive rate of their tests. And so the governor has added Rhode Island to the travel quarantine state. So for folks to go to mass.gov to learn more about that. That is a gubernatorial travel restriction managed by the Commonwealth. We are in step three, or sorry, phase three of the state's reopening. We have been since early July. There was a next part of that, which would have included, you know, concert hall performances, laser tag, certain other activities. That's been put on hold indefinitely in response to the uptick. The governor reduced the limit on outdoor gatherings from one hundred to fifty. The indoor gathering limit remains at twenty-five for both public and private property. I think that's important. The governor has shown some frustration that I'm sure a lot of folks who've been a little more diligent the past five or six months share, which is that, you know, even if you're on your private property, if you have fifty or sixty people living in your house with masks on, you're still risking creating a small cluster. And as we've seen the news, certain places, Cape and Chatham, you have a lifeguard situation in Falmouth. You know, we've done a really good job in the state getting the positive rate under two percent, getting the transmission low. But that's because of vigilance with things like wearing a mask and with keeping your distance. So that indoor gathering limit of twenty-five is for public and private property. Additionally, the governor announced that they'd be establishing a COVID enforcement and intervention team to ramp up enforcement efforts in yet-to-be-named high-risk communities. So in Easton, our caseload continues just to tick up marginally, thankfully. It has largely leveled off since May, just shy of three hundred total cases. Uh, and we uh have unfortunately uh lost thirty-five residents uh to the illness. So as far as municipal services, generally, uh we're continuing to provide uh all of our services remotely. We will be rolling out appointments at some point. Uh, I had originally said perhaps in August, but we will have significant in-person voting activity at the town offices in the last week of August uh as part of the Commonwealth's expanded voting opportunities in uh response to a pandemic. That is leading right into Labor Day weekend. So realistically, we're looking at something post-Labor Day uh for certain in-person appointments. Um, we have been able uh to uh provide our services uh very effectively remotely. Thankfully, we're really well positioned uh or as well positioned, I suppose, as you can be for a pandemic. Um, hit on no notice because we have been proactively shifting things like bill pay and permitting uh online for for at least a decade prior to this hitting. So we've been able to do most of our business uh that way and work with folks over the phone to take care of anything else that we need. Uh, it's a very, very, very busy time for the town clerk. Uh, vote by mail applications are being received now. Um, early voting for the September first primary is gonna begin on Saturday, August twenty-second. Uh, that will be Saturday, Sunday through following Friday. Uh, there's a lot of information on the town's website about that. People have three ways they can vote. Uh, whether uh by mail, early in person or at the polls. I'd encourage everyone to go to the town's website, easton.m a.us and you can just click the giant vote banner and it will take you to all sorts of really good literature that our town clerk and her staff have developed to help people make uh the right choices for themselves uh for their many options on voting. Uh, public health and safety, um town staff and leadership from EMA have integrated with uh select uh working teams that the Eastern Public Schools have established for their own reopening plan uh to provide assistance to the Eastern Public Schools with things relating to facilities, planning, uh financed personnel policies. And more so, we're trying to give you uh the uh team-based approach that we always uh I think benefit from here in town uh to provide uh our expertise where we can be helpful. Um, because the schools have a a pretty tremendous task. In front of them, uh Dr. Cabral, I know, has been giving some very, very lengthy, detailed but important uh presentations and these are the school committee that are available online for folks and their school's website also has their draft uh real putting on that encourage parents who have kids in the school system to read up on that. Um, I think uh they're they're you know, we talk about Gay Fielder or any of our department heads or people having to do so much with so many resources that can go effectively for all public uh schools in the Commonwealth over the summer with such uh almost impossible timelines to pull together such significant plans that the state has uh in Easton has done a good job. Um, there is a item relating to ours. It's one small uh kind of signal of our ongoing planning. Obviously, everyone was caught. Um, the spring was just an experience. None of us had a, no one really was. Um, I guess could have imagined in 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 a certain regard, I mean, lots of uh epidemiologists and bioterror planners probably say a lot of us imagined it, but normal uh day-to-day management, uh that kind of thing of securing supply lines for PPE. As Kristen made a really good point, we were just in line with everyone else and there was just such high demand that it was impossible to get every single thing we needed. Um, so we've been uh looking forward to the fall with the lessons we learned in the spring and the board executed one of those important steps tonight, which is executing and uh establishing our own cache of people uh for emergency communities, responders, uh come fall. Um, public safety and public works remain fully operational. Uh, and that is what I have for the COVID update. I'm happy to answer any questions about that. Um, we're to move on. The board is satisfied.
Terrific. Uh, any questions from the board? Comments?
I would just say, Connor, thank you so much for the update. I know it becomes monotonous, but it is just something that we have to continue to stay on top of while we conduct all the rest of the town business. And I appreciate you putting it together and and all of us are trying to continue to stay engaged on top of it. Uh, it's something that I don't think we can get tired or let down our guard and we have to continue to focus on it. Otherwise, it would become a a bigger problem than it already is. So thank you so much for putting that together.
Thank you.
And the continued efforts of all the teams, please. Uh, I know everybody continues to work at it.
Well, I just want to mention, I don't know if everyone on the select board knows this, but um when we were notified of this, I was actually out of the country on vacation down in Mexico when when it all started to break loose and that was the last week of February going into March. So on March sixteenth was the date that the governor gave the order. And Connor did not take a day off from from then all the way through to uh Memorial Day. So he worked over a hundred days without a day off or a break. And many of our department heads also followed suit on that. So I'm just saying that not to make Connor feel uncomfortable, but so that the public knows that this was really, you know, it everything, when it goes well, it looks like it it's, you know, smooth sailing, but there was so much going on behind the scenes of that with COVID and uh we really recognize that and appreciate that and, you know, appreciate all the extra work that went in by you, Connor, and by uh your staff. And they did that, um, you know, based on your leadership and um and their care and concern for the town and the people in the town. So it means a lot to us. So that's a good segue into um Connor's evaluation. So every year generally after the the new elections, when you have a new board, um, they work with Connor and we come up with the goals and objectives for the next year. And then usually before the election, uh when you still have that same board who issued the goals and objectives, you we um we evaluate based on uh what we had asked to have done at the beginning of the year. So of course, with this year and everything happening, we had to postpone it. The board didn't um change its makeup, so that was uh fortunate for this purpose. So um apologies for being late in doing this, but I just want to say that um the I'm looking at my Word document here and it's twenty-one pages of goals and objectives in ten major areas. Um, with our comments on there, it's seven thousand six hundred and sixty-four words. So I'm gonna have to summarize because it will will be here all night if I go through all of this, but this is gonna be posted after we vote on this. It will be posted on the town website in the Selectments page and I'd encourage everyone to take a look at this to see the level of detail and the actual work that's gone on during the year. Um, it's exhausting to read it. It took a long time to just read it, let alone um put comments in and compile the board's comments. So the ten areas are financial, human resources management and labor relations, communications and community relations, quality of life, planning and economic development, infrastructure and public works, town government efficiency and effectiveness, service and support to the Board of Selectmen, inter and intra-government relationships and professional and personal growth. And the way this works is that first Connor goes through and he um makes his comments on what he did during the year and gives a self-assessment. Um, the choices are uh exceeds expectations, meets expectations and fails to meet expectation. So he puts his comments. Then each of the board members review it themselves and put their um classification out of those three and then we make our comments based on that. So I compile that all and it becomes part of the orig- the official record and his official evaluation. So what I'd like to do is just go through each of the ten. I'll name the category again. And the order of our comments are i- in this order, Full Janetti, Barger, Broussard, King and Lamb. So I'm just gonna read them all quickly so that you can hear how we um how we characterize this. So for the work in the financial um categories, um exceeds, 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 exceeds. So all five of us were unanimous in that. Uh, for the human resources management and labor relations piece, um this was negotiations with uh labor groups and um reorganizing departments for efficiencies. Um, exceeds, 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 exceeds. So everyone um agreed on that. For communications and community relations, um exceeds, meets, meets, exceeds, exceeds. For quality of life, exceeds, meets, 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 meets. For planning and economic development, exceeds, 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 meets. For infrastructure and public works, exceeds, exceeds, meets, exceeds, meets. For town government efficiency and effectiveness, exceeds, meets, meets, exceeds, exceeds. And for service and support to the select board, exceeds, 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 exceeds. Inter and intra governmental relationships, exceeds, meets, exceeds, meets, exceeds. And professional and personal growth, exceeds, meets, meets, exceeds, exceeds. So again, um, you know, Connor, I think this board is very grateful to all the work that you've done this year. I think it's an excellent, um, you know, an excellent report card, if you will. And um if I'm gonna open it up to the select board members to make their comments, starting with Craig.
Connor, I um I said in two places in my assessment of your performance that I was fortunate to be one of three members of the select board in two thousand seventeen to vote to hire you. And I have not regretted it, that vote, that decision, one time. Um, and I sincerely appreciate the work that you've put in. I understand that over the last four or five months, it's been pretty damn dramatic. But before that, you 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 rose to the occasion on any number of situations. Um, and you you've always been very thoughtful, very compassionate, very willing to to listen to members of the select board. Um, seek us out for our suggestions and um for our collaboration. Um, and and I I gotta say that that was a a it was a difficult um process back in two thousand seventeen, as Dottie can well um relate to. Um, and I uh, damn it, I I'm I'm so pleased that I was able to be one of the three votes to hire you.
Thank you, Greg.
Greg. Tom?
Connor, uh, you know, I, as most people know, I come from a a background that isn't rooted in public service uh and instead is business oriented. And one of the things that has always struck me is your ability to seamlessly move between different audiences and different groups. And the way that you communicate with me and share information with me and work alongside as a partner, uh whether it be on as a select board member or the budget subcommittee, um is greatly appreciated in the sense that you adjust and modulate your content and your engagement to the audience at hand. And even as I think about not just in your dealings with me, but as you deal with people in our town and our community, your patience and your desire to create alignment and you engage and you communicate uh in ways that people can understand. And I think if you package that skill set, which is uh incredibly valuable with natural intelligence and a desire to have a strong sense of ownership in the outcome and to do the right thing and to do a good job. I really believe that those are facets uh that make you incredibly successful and it's not surprising to see so many exceeds expectations from all of us regarding the items that we had to evaluate you on. Uh, and I echo Craig's sentiments of being extremely appreciative to work alongside with you. I believe you make any team that you join better. Um, and that is a very much appreciated thing as a member of those teams. So thank you for all of your hard work, your effort and your commitment, not just to us and certainly not just to the town, but every single resident of Easton.
Thank you.
And Chuck?
Connor, some of the questions, uh, some of the uh qualities I've noticed in you in in my time working with you is that you take things personally in a very good way. You care about people and you care about the people in this town. Uh, you're as professional as anyone I've seen in any field of endeavor. Ironically, the only way you get anything less than exceeds expectations from me is because, number one, you're tough on yourself. You expect more of yourself, no matter how well you've done. And so I and the ironic part of it is that you've done such a tremendous job, I feel, in dealing with the pandemic as best we can. Um, and ironically, that is the only that is the only thing that has stopped you from being eh from exceeding expectations in every single category. So I I thank you for the job you've done. Uh, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Scott. Mark?
This year has been one heck of a year. Um, I'd say in all ten of those categories, you were challenged incredibly. And many of those difficulties were completely unplanned. Uh, and you're, I think one of the things that stands out about you, Connor, is uh your reaction in the fi- in the face of unplanned difficulty or an event that is hard on the community and your reaction to that. And you always, always step up to the plate. And uh I'm not one to just dole out compliments. None of us are. Um, but my expect, you you exceed my expectation of you in those moments, um, almost all the time. And I I know that doesn't go to your head because as Chuck said, you are your own biggest critic. And you are humble and uh I think that is what the the town benefits so much because of, because you are the hardest on yourself. So uh you you've done an exceptional job. This town is very lucky to have you. Uh, everybody I know that has uh encountered you, uh it's always been a positive experience, even when they walk in with a with uh an expectation. They always walk out pleased. They may not have heard what they wanted to hear, but they heard the truth. And uh you excel at that. So uh, thank you, Connor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. So um I guess for my comments, I would agree with um with Craig, you know, being one of the three votes to um to hire you. I have never regretted that for for a moment either. Um, in fact, it just reassures me, uh, you know, the further we go along uh in this work. So in the past year, when you look at some of the things that we've done, I mean, it's just been incredible that the biggest infrastructure project that we ever did, but also the Cuisset Infrastructure Project and the new fire station and the new school and just everything it took to to make that happen. Um, the diff, you know, all of the meetings, the the amount of meetings this year was incredible. And then to finishing touch a pandemic. I mean, it's it's almost unimaginable, um, what we've been through together and and under your leadership, Connor. I think one of the things that um I want to say personally, as the chair of the select board, Connor and I work very closely together. Um, you know, everything from agendas to um, you know, furthering the the vision um from our master plan and how we get that done. And Connor, um, he has always been incredibly respectful to me personally and to everyone on this board and to the public and and the and the staff and the people that he deals with. And that's, you know, really, um to me, that's one of the important characteristics of somebody. It shows their integrity and in all that they do. And I can't speak highly enough of that with Connor. Um, I think that he, you know, we have to make votes and decisions on incredibly important things. They're gonna change the the shape of what our town looks like or the way that people live. And it's really scary when I vote and I'm, you know, just, is it the right thing? How is this gonna play into all the other things that we have going on? And I never feel unprepared with that because Connor always brings all the data, all the facts. All that information is there for us to make a good, well-informed decision. So those are the things that are important to me and um, you know, really appreciate it and look forward um to the next ten years with Connor. What I did there? So Connor, I don't know if you wanna make any comments or?
Hit that bar really hard. Hi, Dottie.
Um, just to say thank you, um. It has been a a really uh difficult um year uh for everyone. Uh, and I, you know, anytime I uh found myself waking up in the morning, particularly in one of those uh spring days, um, you know, a Saturday or Sunday or whatever, uh working, uh, you know, sometimes uh it's certainly the hardest I've ever worked in my life. I reminded myself uh to count my blessings that I am uh healthy and employed and better off than millions of this country therefore, right? And uh not only that, that I'm fortunate enough to uh have a a really uh incredible team of professionals around me, right? We just got through tonight with recognizing the advancement of the careers of uh two great folks who have already done so much.
We just got through tonight with recognizing the advancement of the careers of two great folks who have already done so much for us. And, and Corey and Kristen, you know, establishing things to be prepared to go at it on our own should we need to. With certain emergency responses because of the great leadership of Kevin and Kristen. And, you know, also Gary, although he didn't have an item on the agenda tonight. Or, you know, to Dave Field being nationally recognized. So I kind of give Dave a hard time that he hates being, I'm a receiving end of these things, but so do I. So we're kindred spirits in that regard. And I'm able to succeed because they are so good at what they do. And all of us are able to succeed because I think, you know, to tie it back to the board's decision to hire me. The board has spent years re-establishing a culture of professionalism and respect and civility that everyone on this board, I think, embodies. And it makes it easier for me to do my job and from our office to do hard things. When, at no point when we're having these incredibly difficult meetings, you know, we used to be sitting around tables saying, is this really happening? Is there really a pandemic going on? We need to make X, Y, Z decision and we need to do it quickly. It helps us do it well, knowing that we have a board that backs our professionalism and our expertise. And at no point do questions come up of, well, is a board member going to be mad because they read something on Facebook or some other distracting type item? Because we know that you value us doing the right thing, guided by our best professional judgment, even when those things are hard. So you make it possible for me to do my job in the way that I do and I'm thankful for that. And I'm thankful to the community here too, who have been really great, you know, whether it's town meeting in November for a hundred million dollar school with folks really, really buying into and engaging in stuff that can be, sometimes be more akin to paint drying, except for Tom. I'm sorry, Tom. Not, you know, most people aren't really getting into thirty-year bond increment financing, but they did and they did a great job and they were awesome. And I'm happy I was able to be a part of that with the schools. Or actually, again, at Stone Hill in June, where we had, you know, pandemic town meeting with everyone spread out with masks and having really difficult conversations, but everyone, you know, really doing their part in the community. Means a lot to me. I, and I remind myself that I'm, I'm fortunate to play my part here. And I just, you know, I remind myself, I'm like anyone else. I just, I have a job and I just try to do it well. And I'm glad that the board seems to think that I'm hitting that mark. So thank you. And I, thanks to everyone who works with me. And it's, it's been a crazy year.
Great. Thank you. And thank you to the board for, for putting the effort in to put some nice comments in there as well. So again, this will all be on the town's website and the public can look at that. And that's memorialized by, by this. So we need to take a vote to accept the, accept the, how do I say this? The performance evaluation as written by the select board in our packet tonight. And if you'd like to make the motion, Craig?
I'm moved. Barger.
Second, brusard.
Barger, brusard, and roll call vote.
Barger, yes, with pleasure.
Sorry, enthusiastically, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Terrific. So the next item up is a discussion and vote for an extension of an employment agreement with the town administrator. So as is typical, after a, a review, we will look at trying to extend the contract of the town administrator. We can't go more than five years and the, you know, we usually add one year every time we do this at the contract. And so Connor has requested that the board consider an extension of his employment agreement, which is currently set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, for one additional year at the existing rate of, of annual salary increase. And Connor will provide the board with a proposed extension for us to vote, should we wish. So this is for us to give you consensus, Connor, or to vote?
No, I'm asking, I sent to the board the same one-page document we used last year. It's, it's, it's a form approved by Labor Council. It only has two sections. It adds one year to my contract. So in this case, it would keep me on board until June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. And it adds the salary adjustment of a two and a half percent increase at that time in what will then be fiscal year twenty-three.
Okay. I don't see that in my email easily.
It was sent. I did receive it.
Yeah, I got it.
Correct. It came out at ten twenty-five AM today.
Dottie, I just resent it to you.
I think I get too many emails.
I hear you on that.
That's, that's July one of two thousand twenty-two to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three.
Correct. Yeah, so that'd be the additional year.
Okay. Terrific. So would somebody like to make the motion?
Barger.
Second, brusard.
The barger, brusard, and roll call vote.
Barger, yes.
Sorry, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Great. Thank you and congratulations, Connor. Town administrator notes.
I do have some notes. So I just wanted to talk on a few points regarding the election opportunity that people have. I just wanna make sure I have the proper notes. If you give me one quick second. As a reminder, the primary is September first. There are three options for voters to vote this year. The first is more traditional, in-person on Election Day. So that will be September first, seven AM to eight PM at the Oliver Ames High School, the normal polling location. There will be precautions in place there. Everyone will need to wear a mask, similar to the elections we had this June. The second option available, folks, is in-person early voting. That begins on Saturday, August twenty-second, and that goes through Friday of August twenty-eighth at the town offices. Again, there will be health precautions there as we did for our June second election. There will be virus guards, distance markers. We'll only be letting five voters in the building at a time. We ask they wear a mask, bring a pen. The hours for that are available on our website. The third option, the most novel one, is that folks can vote by mail. The clerk's office for the September first primary must receive your vote by mail application. So everyone should have received from the Commonwealth that postcard application for your ballots. And the clerk's office has to receive that in the mail by Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, in order for you to get a ballot sent back to you from the first. Voters, once you have your ballot and you fill it out, can either mail that back to the clerk's office or you can drop it. We have a new ballot box, very patriotic-looking ballot drop box that's locked and secured at the town offices. You can put your ballot in. If you are submitting your ballot application and you feel like you're cutting it close to the deadline, you can send a scanned copy of it via email to the clerks by sending it to votebymail@easton MA.us. Just some general notes there. We, we strongly recommend that if people are considering voting by mail on September first, if they get that application in the mail now, basically, get it in there as soon as possible to give you ample time and give us ample time for postal service to deliver it to us, for us to process it, and then for us to mail the ballot back to you. If you are concerned with applying for your ballot early because you wanna wait a little longer to make your decision on who you're voting for, all that sending your application does is get you a ballot. You can hold on to your ballot and make your decision and you could drop that ballot in the, the ballot return box of a week prior to the election at the town offices. If you've already applied for a ballot, a lot of folks were eager. They did a good job. They got those ballot applications in the mail right away. If you had put that in the mail on or before July thirty-first, the clerk's office sent their first very large batch of ballots out on Friday. It was over twenty-six hundred ballots. You know, so we would just ask our folks, be patient with us. We are making sure we are very, very diligent in tracking things well. But we have seventeen thousand registered voters and we have a three-person election office. So the clerk's office mailed out over twenty-six hundred ballots on Friday. So again, if you submitted your ballot application in the mail by the end of July, you should be getting your ballot this week. And if you don't, the Secretary of the Commonwealth has a website where you can track the status of your ballot. If you go to trackmyballotMA.com. If you are applying for your ballot after the end of July, give it up to three weeks. I'm a most conservative and cautious timeframe, a week for it to get to us, a week for us to process it, and a week for the ballot to get back to you. There's a ton of detailed information and obviously it's much more helpful for people, I think, to read this than to hear someone say it off the top of their head. So I really, really encourage anyone who has questions about their options for voting this fall to go to the town's website. We have a pop-up that says election options. We have a giant banner that says vote in huge letters. Click either of those. It'll bring you to the clerk's page. They have a ton of really helpful, very specific guidance on how you can exercise your right to vote this fall. And I can't recommend enough that folks go there. And after reviewing everything, if you still have questions, you can email votebymail@easton MA.us. So that's my, my spiel for the primary.
Thank you very much. And thanks to all the hard work from that department. It looks like a mailhouse in there, so. Great. Now, before we do select board notes, I just wanna, because I always have a tendency to almost forget the minutes. We have minutes of six one twenty twenty, six fifteen twenty twenty, six twenty-nine twenty twenty, and seven twenty-seven twenty twenty. So if the board has had a chance to review these, I would love to entertain a motion to accept all of those minutes.
Barger.
Second, brusard.
Barger, brusard, and all in favor, starting with you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Brusard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full genetti, yes. So select board notes, Craig?
Nothing at this time. Congratulations again, Connor.
Tom?
I have nothing at this time as well, Dottie. Thank you.
Chuck?
I have no notes, Doug.
And Mark?
Yes, I do have some notes. I would like to give a shout out to the Oliver Ames class of twenty twenty. They graduated on Saturday, August first. The DPW, the school department, the school administration, the school committee. There was a lot of moving parts and putting that all together safely. And they did, and they did it successfully. And that class has been, they've had a hard year. And they deserve every ounce of congratulations and I wish nothing but the best for them. And then on Friday, August seventh, there was Purple Heart Day and Corey did an outstanding job. It was not open to the public. It was done very safely in conjunction with Kristen and her office and Tom Botello and Brendan Thrasher were the two that were recognized by the House and the Senate. And just wanna say a job well done, Corey, and congratulations to those two gentlemen who were recognized.
Great. Thank you. So I have a couple of comments. I wanted to take a minute to thank the people in our community for their patience and support as we find our way through this pandemic. I've received a lot of communication from people thanking the board and Connor and the staff for the work that we're doing to keep the community updated about COVID, amongst other things. And I just wanna let people know that the board does appreciate that and we welcome the feedback. So let us, let us know if you have comments and questions about that or any of the issues that we talk about. I also wanna thank the people that are shopping at the local farmer, local farmer's market or at our restaurants or small businesses. It's crucial to show our small businesses that we care. And small business is vital to the community. And we're not out of the woods with this epidemic yet and our pandemic. And, you know, as our restaurants are all starting to figure out how to be able to operate, you know, this, this model is really scheduled to be up to October thirty-first. So November first, when it gets colder out, they're gonna have to find new ways to still connect with the public. So we wanna make sure that we are showing our support and embracing them in the community. And then last but not least, I just wanted to let everyone know a quick reminder that the temporary grant assistance available for income-qualified renters through the Affordable Housing Trust, check out the town crier for details on that. There is some rental relief for about three months of rental payments. And there's guidelines and details about that that you can see in the town crier for more details. But the deadline to submit your application is this Wednesday, August twelfth. So just a reminder on that. And if there's no other business before the board, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second, brusard.
So that was barger, brusard, and Craig, start in the roll call vote.
Brusard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And full genetti, yes. So that's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. It was a little bit longer than our usual meetings and I appreciate everyone being here tonight. Have a good night.